I'm waiting, no one's surprised that yet.
Right, we. One minute. Yes, the case only logs on, right? Okay, you're on.
Yep.
Okay, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the planning commission from Wednesday, June 5th, 2024. We'll call.
We'll call. Oh, um. Chair Yelson.
Yeah.
Jefferson, like. Litch, sorry.
Sorry.
I don't have the role. Eric here, Katie Maxwell.
Yeah.
And Uchi. Who's, who's like it?
It's like a sending.
Yep.
Okay, and then just for everybody's to be aware and acknowledge the passing of our commissioner. Don, I don't know if I could do this, um. He, God, I'm gonna miss him sitting next to me. Always nurturing them in, was a great guy, he was great for the community on this commission, he's been on for a long, long time. Gosh, almost as long as I have, so our thoughts and prayers are with his family at this time. Is anybody have something? Okay, with that, we'll go to approve in the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Make a motion to approve the. Second.
Second.
Um, all those in favor, yes? Opposed, okay, the motion passes, approval in the minutes for May 1st, 2024. Motion to approve.
Make a motion, we have three minutes from the May 1st, 2024.
I'll say again.
Um, any? Questions, I found one. Um, on the first page under applicant. Oh wait, no. Take that back, now it makes sense, Colorado four points funding. Anybody else?
There's one on line three after staff update, it says, set in there is the sentence, that's all I saw.
Okay, uh. Approval of the minutes, all those in favor, yes? Opposed, motion carries. Right now, anybody have a conflict of interest on the commission? No conflict of interest. A public comment that's something not on the agenda? Nope.
No one is online and no one signed up, so.
Okay, staff update?
Sure, I have just a couple of things, first, so the July meeting is tentatively scheduled for July 3rd. I will actually be out of town and I know it's the day before a holiday, so I'm wondering if. What, what my commission thinks about either moving it to maybe July 10th or potentially canceling if there's nothing pressing. I know we're working on a few things, but wanted to see what folks thought, or we could have potentially John kind of just fill in for the meeting.
I think if you don't have any agenda items, we could go to the. August, what, 7th?
I also will not be here for July, I just realized I'm going to, not Chris, so I probably will be here.
I will be here either on the 20th, so. Yeah, and then I'm gone after, on the 10th, through the 10th, through the. Yeah, okay.
So maybe we cancel, tentatively cancel July unless something really pressing comes up that requires. An emergency meeting at later in the month or something like that.
Yeah. And then if we do have to schedule something later in the month, whoever can make it, I mean, I'm out of town too, so. But someone else can do the meeting, so that's fine if something does come up.
Uchi's our wife's chair, yeah.
Yeah. Uchi can do the meeting.
Can we, can we also do it like virtually, would that be a thing or?
Yeah, I've done that before, so yeah, I've logged in where we've done a meeting too before, so yeah, if something does come up, we can still do it in the month of July.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing. As of now, that would be on the agenda, other than potentially work session items, which. We could just, you know, potentially plan for more work session in August if we add to, so.
Okay. So right now, let's cancel it and then if something comes up, reschedule.
Well, that's, that works for me, perfect, let's see, a couple of other updates. I finally got our GIS software up and running this week, so I'm working on a bunch of maps, like the three mile plan that we talked about last month. Getting that together, so that'll probably be an August item, which is good. The county recently completed a purchase agreement for the property of 103 that I may have mentioned that will be for senior housing. There's a, there's a property that's near the cemetery that the gentleman who. Lives there said, hey, I want to sell it to the city and I want to make it senior housing. Have it be senior housing in perpetuity, so that purchase just went through, which is kind of exciting, so. There will be a number of steps before we were able to develop anything there, but that's step one, so. That's just an update of something that's going on, I mentioned this to Uchi, but she also purchased 1856 Colorado Boulevard, which is the old Sunshine Capé building. Long-term goal, sorry, long-term goal is to turn that into parking of some kind, but for this summer. The council is leasing the building for use to the Creek Center for Art and Education. And so they'll be doing summer youth programming there, so you might see stuff going on, and there's a bunch of cool interesting programs like ukulele. Lessons and Taylor Swift dance lessons and things like that, so.
Song lesson.
Yeah, you know, learning the dances and songs and all that kind of stuff.
My granddaughter's student.
Seems pretty, uh, pretty fun, and they may have programming for adults as well, and they're trying to work with some organizations in Denver to do some, some more like. Visual arts stuff, painting and the like, so they are putting stuff out and they should be at a work session in the. Council in the near future to kind of give more of an update, so I can keep you up to date on that.
So they're gonna demolish that building and do parking?
That's the long-term goal, and the idea being that it's likely to be an extension of paid parking. It kind of serves potentially two purposes, it's like overflow for special events downtown, but also with Virginia Canyon Park opening soon. With the first few trails, it could also serve as additional space kind of more closer to, you know, that side of the city where folks park. Um, because we are foreseeing. A lot of potential visitors to the east side of the city in the next couple of months. And we're, you know, kind of leading into that is there's a bunch, internally, we're working on our game plan updates, which is done. Annually, generally anyway, for downtown, there hasn't been a whole lot rest of the city, but this, this year, in the near future, we're gonna be focusing on. The east side as well, and potentially looking at more residential parking zones and no parking areas and kind of identifying places where. Won't be user conflicts. Only other thing I have is just two other notes of events, tomorrow, all the flowers are being planted downtown, so there's gonna be like a. Whole truck full of flowers coming at like 8:00 AM, and then everyone is spreading out and planting, so you'll see that tomorrow, and then June 8th. Is that Burling's Fest that I mentioned last month with all the dogs and things like that, so if you're interested in. See, you know, being around a bunch of dogs on Saturday, come downtown, otherwise maybe avoid my industry. So I think that's all for me for now, unless anyone has questions about anything broader than that.
Hey, any questions for tomorrow, updates?
Um, and I don't know, you wanna talk about?
Oh.
The vacancy, um, the, the code requires that city council fill vacancies on our boards, so. And it basically just says it shall be filled at a reasonable length of time, so. I think we'll probably bring it up with council on Monday, which is the next meeting, but if. And I don't know if council wants to do like a posting where you submit a letter of interest like two of you recently did, and I guess everyone who was reappointed did, but.
Do they have to do the posting, or could the alternates have a letter in by Monday for the council to look at?
They can do anything they want in terms of the procedure. Like Dylan said, the only requirements are the council appoints the person, it's done within a reasonable time. And the person that's appointed serves for the remainder of Don's term, so.
I guess what I would think would be the nice thing to do is. If you guys could submit the letter, if you're both interested, I mean, appointment, you'd still be an alternate, and then one of them becomes the first alternate, you know, whichever one. And or even communicate between you two, okay, I'll do it, you do it, however you guys want to do it, but it'd be nice to do it by Monday if that's possible, and then let the city advertise for an alternate, yeah.
Yeah, Andy mentioned that if anyone is interested in submitting a letter of interest. For Monday, we could, he's finalizing the packet for council by around probably end of day or early Friday, so maybe email.
The letter to, I'm just saying as an alternate.
Or just to me, and I could get it to Andy, and we could put it in the packet, you know, and council says, no, we want to advertise and all of that. Fair enough, but you know, otherwise that might be a good way to expedite.
Yeah.
The.
And then just advertise for another alternate, that's if you guys, but then one of you becomes the alternate when the others don't show up.
We have a couple, a couple weeks, so it was a couple months ago, we kind of talked about this, and we, we're trying to remember how, how we've done this historically. Would it be smart for us to kind of request for you two guys, if you could. Kind of depending on what happens on Monday, I guess whatever they decide to do, like add another, like more specification for that, so. Next time it happens, there's a, all right, which you, you know, and we don't have to figure it out how to, I feel like that would be the most, the cleanest way?
Well, I think it is, the council has to appoint it, just like they had to appoint us, the alternate thing, what we just decided. Was when somebody isn't here for a meeting and both alternates are here, we just did it on who had applied first.
Right, and it was a little bit difficult since both of you applied like the same day and were appointed on the same day, but if. Let's say one of you do become a regular member, then obviously whoever's not the regular member would. I guess all that, then it would clearly be the seniority of whoever remains an alternate, I suppose, but.
I mean, that's kind of what we, yeah, I don't kind of think it should be, but I, there's nothing written, and then what happens when we're all gone and the next people is like, oh, so how does, you know, like.
Well, procedurally, they do have to appoint it, like council, I think that's written out that way, but.
Yeah, but they don't have a specific, they could do whatever, like.
I think to do that, what you're suggesting, Uchi, I think they'd have to. Um, and I don't know if they'd have to, but it would probably be smartest to codify a procedure in the. Code that talks about the vacancy appointment.
How could, could we just maybe just have an internal policy memo sort of thing that, so that we can just at least remember what happened last time, I guess, it's in the minutes, I suppose.
Or whoever's the planner, next, you know, after so many planners we've had, like, someone they can kind of be like, okay, I know where to go and find that.
I, I think that's fair, but it being an internal document.
Yeah.
Councils change all the time, and the council could say, we don't want to follow this at all, they wouldn't have to, I mean, they really can. In filling this vacancy, they can do whatever procedure they want. They could choose not to advertise it and kick some random person out of the crowd if they wanted to. We're really kind of open with our options. I, I did send Andy an email today talking about this, he didn't get back to me, but I told him, hey. Let me know how you think the council want to handle this, I will also be filling in for Carmen on Monday's council meeting, so. I'll be there with them to kind of walk us through with that, and sure Dylan will be there, so we can pass along.
And I can talk to Andy tomorrow, then see how he wants to proceed. If he has an occasion, but you know.
Any questions? As you can see, we always need our alternatives. Um, any other new business, any questions?
But I guess I, I will add, I asked Andy to share with me any detail about Don's memorial, so I don't know. You got it.
Yeah, if you could share it in case somebody's.
Yeah. That's all I got.
When, when is it?
Uh, he isn't.
Oh.
I, I just, I, when I heard about the news, I said, just keep me up to date, I'd like to go schedule.
Okay, um, new business, we have an ordinance accepting and rezoning the alignment of the 900 block of Minor Street. Um, it's in the packet, do you want to just give us the update on it?
Yes, and I noticed that the packet that didn't include the final exhibit, so I'll just pull that up here and then I can pass it around if needed, but just for the recording and all that. Essentially, what the state statute requires is that it allows the city to accept right of way and street alignment as it exists. But it requires planning commission to review and make a recommendation, and then council would approve by ordinance. And in this particular instance, the town plat, which was included in the packet, which was platted back in 1881, had a right of way for this section of Minor Street, but it's not incredibly clear. And in some, you know, in the time, last 140 plus years, um. Street maintenance and construction and all of that obviously is not ever been formally recognized with how it has existed. Quite a long time now, a number of decades, and so it count, so the, the purpose of this ordinance is to formally accept the current alignment of Minor Street. Uh, essentially, as my memo suggests here, there's a few areas that typically around, up to six feet that. Street has been paved for a very long time, up to retaining walls and fences and things like that. Um, and city has done all the maintenance and, and all of that, but has never formally recognized that area, and so the ordinance would formally recognize. The right of way as it's shown on this. Exhibits, which the exhibit that was the packet looks like is kind of just roughly put together by me, but since then, we had Weston from Clear Peak Surveying come out and properly survey it. Which is, what's up, so. Ultimately, if planning commission recommends approval, we'll take it to council on Monday, council would act on the ordinance, uh, and so. The recommendation is that we would recommend approval here tonight, um. But if you have any questions or comments or concerns, uh, happy to discuss.
So this kind of helps the, all the property owners along there that had some concerns, because it straightens out that line and the look of it.
Well, it, um. It formalizes what, what's sort of there without actually changing anything around, so folks kind of then can specifically say, okay, this is my. Property line, and this is where see right of way, and this is where my maintenance is, and this is where the city has to maintain, and it. Coincides with the improvements that are happening to this stretch of road, because as part of that four points project, they're, they're expanding the road south quite a ways in order to get the width. Required to, uh. Go to drive lanes and the street parking sidewalks, and so by formalizing the right of way, it allows the sidewalks to be built up to those. Kind of existing lines that are already there, and so you don't have this kind of strange. Three to six foot space where it's like pavement, and then folks taming wall and all that, and then sidewalks, functionality would essentially be there. Pay, pave it such that.
So it's a good thing.
There's a good sidewalk instead of this weird, I don't know, no man's land.
Okay, so do we, we need a motion to.
Yeah.
Approve the ordinance?
Yeah, motion, I guess, would be to recommend that city council approve an ordinance, accepting and recognizing the alignments.
Okay.
And yes, the council.
Motion to recommend approval, I, I also. Want to ask, the second from the bottom layer as clause, it says the ordinance was submitted to the planning commission on April 3rd. I'm assuming it's just a typo.
Yeah.
Should say.
This is the. Right, it was not reviewed on June 3rd, we have since, uh. That's, which line is the second?
I think, I would think it says, yeah, June 3rd, June 5th.
Yeah, that is interesting, because then on the next page, it says, yeah, so that's just, it didn't get updated, because originally, we were going to take it a couple months ago to. Planning Commission, but they didn't have exhibits ready, um, so, so I think. Did first reading occur at this 13th, May 13th meeting? Well, first reading at city council actually occurred in March, because we. Because it's not a city code requirement, um, until we got to, well, after that meeting, we did not know we needed action from planning commission. So Carmen then said, hey, you did first reading, which is fine, but it doesn't look like you took it to planning commission, and I said, well. You know, I, it basically was an oversight of my art, city parts, which is why we're here now, and first meeting was. Why, okay, because this date also needs to be changed, it says.
Where is that date to get here?
This other date is on the bottom of page two, it says passed, adopted, and approved in, on May 13th. Right. So that needs to be changed to June 10th, and then this other date that says June 10th needs to be the previous day.
Yeah.
Whatever the March date is.
Right.
I only see the.
Fun issues on the dates, it's like directly below those signature blocks or the.
Oh, at the bottom down there.
Yeah.
Okay, so that date needs to be changed to what?
Uh, that would be that date in March, I think the meeting was March 25th, looking at the calendar. Change dates, I think it's just changing all the dates of the ordinance.
And everything else stays the same.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion. With the ordinance number in the first sentence.
A motion to recommend approval.
With the changes.
With the date changes is directed at staff.
So do we have a motion?
Um, motion to recommend approval of the date changes recommended by staff?
No, okay, so.
Read the, um, recommendation to council to approve ordinance and read the top ordinance number.
You say like, you say like ordinance number 12, series 2024, and then you read the title of the ordinance.
And add this, yeah.
Then suggest a motion?
Yeah, and then do, at the end, like.
And with the date.
Do this hard way, am I?
No way. Okay, so where is the ordinance?
Bottom page.
It's like at the bottom.
Says ordinance number 12, series.
I recommend approval.
Recommend approval of an ordinance accepting and recognizing the alignment of the 900 block of Minor Street. With, with the changes of dates recommended by staff? With the changes of dates recommended by staff.
Regulations, shared amenity housing, I mean, to me, they're all different definitions.
I was gonna ask too, shared amenities, that specifying long term versus short term as well?
I think if we're defining, I would say shared amenity would be a long term housing type. Uh, which, you know, we don't actually really have a definition in code right now on much long term. We have a definition of short term, well, we have short term rental regulations that say. Any stay of less than thirty days. But we don't define. Anything beyond that, so. And we define elsewhere transient as being less than thirty days. But we don't kind of speak to candies. Where.
Three, four month rental.
Right, like what if you had a rental of thirty days, it's that long term rental. Per our short term rental regulations, it would be, you could have someone in every thirty days, they leave, something else comes in thirty days. And you can just rent your house out like that all year long without. Any real standards other than building codes and whatnot in place, but. It seems like. Of defining what's needed, like long term versus short term, maybe a distinction to make. Because if you're staying for more than, if you are staying for seasonally or or something like that, maybe. It seems like we've kind of said with hotels that. There should maybe be more to regulations than just regulating it as a hotel.
And then it the seasonal could be, you don't want to really use. Words seasonal, because say if you get the hotel and they want to have some. Shared amenity housing and run a hotel, they could do both, so you don't want to put a time limit.
Right.
On it.
Right, well, and what I'm general, or what we, I guess, are generally proposing is that, let's say a hotel wants to do it. For just one room. They could just have one room, be long, like it's extended stay. But they still have to meet whatever the basic standards for extended stay housing are. And then all the other rooms will just be short term lodging.
The license that they would get includes all of it, and that way the city is covered with allowing that use of that property. From a liability standpoint, because right now, they're allowing this, and if something happens, there's no license for it. They're not, they're not running a hotel motel, they're doing more than that, yeah.
And we don't have.
Yeah, right? So it sounds like in.
I don't think it's a liability issue per se, or just like a.
Less kind of attributed is mishaps that have happened, yeah.
Minor. Issue. Yeah.
So it almost sounds like. To get this done is move forward with that, and then. After this, work on the dormitory style, or kind of in conjunction, I mean, I think we're pretty close on this.
Yeah, I think like. At a minimum, I think if we're comfortable maybe defining what shared amenity housing is and kind of basics of. Like maybe what you want with an extended stay hotel is the same as you'd want with like. Dorm, like you have a college campus, and we can just say if you're doing anything that's. Extended stay hotel, shared many housing, which includes extended stay hotel, it has to have. You know, what what kind of, we had talked about last time, it's like.
Right.
Cooking facilities that includes certain elements. Store storage facilities, certain amount of bathrooms, sort of space per person or what have you. And kind of leave it at that and not kind of go into more of the form and function necessarily of one of those shared spaces. And then kind of go into more depth on licensing of an extended stay hotel, because I think if someone said, I'm gonna do a dorm for my twelve. Like Kramer, let's say who's doing the. Floyd Hill project said, hey, we've got fifty employees who don't have housing, let's do a fifty employee dorm in Idaho Springs, like, you say, well, we're not. You can do it because it's defined, but you have to get a conditional use permit, and then we kind of can look at it on a case by case basis, and we don't have to set specific standards now, but.
That's not a bad idea, so if, I mean, it's not like there's a lot of property to do that on.
That's that's true as well, it would probably be a redevelopment of.
But that's a good way to at least let it move forward, where if somebody was interested in doing it. They're not getting a hold of you and totally shut down.
Yeah, and I I think that could at least open the door to kind of. Helping us comply with some of the state level things and making it easier to do kind of affordable housing potentially, because we could say, hey, we we could allow this affordable housing type. You just need to show that it meets our, you know, health safety welfare and doesn't affect neighbors. All all that kind of thing, which.
I was kind of wondering that too, so based on zoning districts here, does that open up like merger style houses? Or a shared amenity? Potentially by investors or something like that at that point?
I think, yeah, if we were to define it and allow it as a use and say that R three or R N.
Right.
District, you could theoretically build a, yeah, very large house and almost like apartment. Section it out more efficiently in a residential neighborhood, which could certainly have. Unintended negative consequences.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, whereas if we said, well, it's not an allowed use by right anywhere, but you could. Apply for a conditional use to allow it, then we'd have a lot more ability maybe to.
Yeah, the intentives for residential, it's for the hotels that are currently doing it. Um, I don't think the homes could. Um, do it by, because of parking.
Yeah, that's another apartment I saw there too.
Yeah.
Because I do know the um. But because like R three zoning allows multi family. And so you could do, let's say, in this hypothetical, you're like, I could do twelve units on this two acre parcel. Have the apartments, or I could do more of like a dormitory. Sort of thing, and whether that would be equally appropriate, not that we have the space for it necessarily. But uh, you know, you could see an alternate world, I guess, where instead of Big Horn Apartments going in, or instead of Riverbend, for example. Instead, they could have done something that's more. Like much smaller bedroom units and a lot more shared space, and then put more units in potentially.
Question about that, um. I guess two kind of related, obviously, um, so why not R ones and R twos allowed in? And if we were to do, and could they apply for conditional use? Because I'm sorry, I'm just robbed the whole thing. Uh, and I ask that because I feel like my first thing, I think, what's a practical thing to do is like, probably we find a bigger houses where could be more. Convenient to be transformed into that. And are are wanted to.
Well.
Don't want people to do it in residential areas.
That's what, that's my question is what, yeah, what are the reasons?
Yeah, I just got a concern.
Well, the reason why it's, yeah.
Yeah, I would leave this topic, you did remind everyone, right?
So, R one and R two both don't allow multi family housing, that's like R one only allows single family, it doesn't even allow a duplex currently. And R two would allow a duplex or a single family, and so. If, um, you know, the reason I put as potentially a place where it could be as R three or R N is because they allow multi family already. And so in that example where you had an R one lot, you could apply for a conditional use.
And assuming your neighbors are fine with that, that could go through.
It could work, yeah, I mean, theo theoretically, I guess, with their conditional use regulations, you could apply for. Almost anything, almost anywhere, you know, if you wanted to apply for a slaughterhouse in R one.
Don't use that word with her.
It probably would de- deny it because it, you know, potentially because it's not compatible with residential.
Your neighbors won't live around it, yeah.
You could do a commercial use or industrial use in R one if you got approved for a conditional use in theory, so that would potentially be a way in which. Someone could pursue it if they had an R one lot that was really big and separate from all the others and something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking it could be potential world, but that could be another.
Um.
Wondering. I can't believe how loud this highway is tonight.
I know.
It is so loud in here, I don't.
A lot of these windows are removeds.
Oh, wow.
Like they're temporary windows because they're all being replaced.
Oh, yeah, that's why, that's why.
Yeah, they're all being replaced right now as part of the, like, the work that they're doing to the exterior, so, you know, which is why I like the.
Okay. Okay. I was gonna say, I don't ever remember it being this loud, and you just think it's a great year.
I did notice that though, it's, I then like feel like I'm yelling.
Yes.
Um.
So, yeah, sorry to bring that up, I just wasn't sure.
No, I think.
Um, whole holistically allowing it in those zoning districts, does that open up for some investors, somebody to come in and do something that wouldn't desire at some.
Yeah, I think, I think it could, and that's where, you know, I mentioned maybe a conditional use is the better way to go as a start until we.
So, in those zones with the conditional use permit, and it does not include R one or R two. Yeah.
Right, and I, and I think we could even just say it's not like an allowed use in any zone, if you want it anywhere, it has to be conditional, or maybe.
It is.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Would it be reasonable to have it?
But you would have to change the ordinance on R one and R two, you'd have to change all that to allow multi, so.
It sounds like maybe none of the residential districts is inappropriate, but maybe commercials we might.
Well, I think if R three is already listed in there in the code book, that's fine. But with us adding that you still have to get the conditional use permit, then at least it can be. Every everybody will be made aware of it.
Right.
Without going back and re-inventing the wheel on R one, R two, R three, because that's a long process, having been involved with that long time.
I'm just thinking, I believe that strip between the visitor's center and downtown, is that R three? Um, and I guess it makes, isn't it? So.
Where did our map go?
I know, I know.
Yeah, where did that map go? We worked hard on that thing.
Second to see that, so there's there's those, um.
One of his biggest spot.
The senior apartments right there. So all of that area is actually C one.
Oh, you see what happened there?
A lot of it is, um, which is kind of a strange zoning district, because a lot of the, a lot of the. Structures in this area. In the middle of the screen here, C one is single family, and technically speaking, single family is not permitted in C one, but. Uh, if if you have a nonconforming use that predates the district, then you're. It's not conforming legal use until you change that use, and then you can't. Like if you were to knock down the house, you hotel, you couldn't then go back to. But you keep your single family home.
You will have to apply for a conditional use.
Right, yeah, so, that's great, right, so, yeah, I guess if you like, so for example, like that. Real estate office that's on the corner by Health Center, that looks like it was at one point a single family home. Got converted to this commercial use, so at this point, if they came back and said, hey, I want to just live in it now. I'd probably make them get a conditional use permit to do so, because they they're now a conforming use of.
They do have apartments.
Right, yeah, I think you're allowed to have. Excuse, like a residential can be accessory to your primary commercial use, so maybe I have to do it that way. So anyway, it's kind of that whole area is pretty confusing, but in an example where, you know, we're allowed. The shared amenities at C one, C two, C three. That theoretically, someone come in and say, hey, I want to convert this large home or or demolish it and build like a. Shared amenity style houses instead, and I don't know whether. Think that's appropriate or.
If they have to get a conditional use permit, at least they have to go through the process and people get to have a say so.
Sure.
I mean, that to me is the main thing is, because if you bought the property thinking that it's a C one and you want to develop, it's their property. It's just as long as they're meeting the requirements, that's a tough one, it's buyer beware if you're buying a spot. And it's a C one or next to a C one.
Right, because those apartments right there, there's a house that's for sale one lot over, so I'm like, wow.
Where is this?
Right on minor there, I think, um, I don't know, I think it's the senior apartments there, just before downtown, yeah.
It's like more houses that are gonna clear one, yeah.
Oh, Dar's house?
Yeah, yeah, as I said, that was for sales, like. Whereas someone buys it and wants to convert it to shared amenity, and now the people in the queue are kind of squashing between.
Well, they can't do shared amenity.
Right.
Because shared amenity is supposed to be for the hotel motels, you don't want it to get.
No, she has identified that we can do either hotels or housing in general, right?
But if, but if planning commission doesn't think that kind of expanding it beyond like existing hotels is a good idea, we can.
No, I think it's genius, I think that's the way to go.
I I think the distinction is shared amenity could be more like a, without. Implicating a zone district, shared amenity would be more like a residential apartment building.
Implicating a zone district, shared amenity would be more like a residential apartment building, right? A hotel motel is a commercial operation.
So maybe shared amenity, I I see what you're thinking, you're thinking that somebody can take their home and now do this. And be in a shared amenity, well, they're not gonna meet the parking requirements, first of all, but but that's not what we want to happen.
Right.
Because we want it to be, we're trying to come up with something for the hotel motels. And these properties that already have these places built on how. The city can be aware of that that's what they're doing there, um.
Yeah, but he has been able to separate those two, so that will still happen. But now that we can also look at these other things that are no hotels.
Right, but we gotta be careful with the wording, so it doesn't give people the idea of they do it with their home.
I think. What a lot of places are doing, and maybe it's appropriate here, maybe it isn't, it's a lot of. Communities are. Potentially allowing in certain zoning districts, the ability to be more flexible in how your housing looks, and so if we're trying to avoid. It in places that are residential homes, I think that's um. Certainly a reason why I originally excluded R one and R two, um. But let's say you were wanting to redevelop one of the lots on the east end of town, let's say like wildfire. Been for sale for quite a long time and you said, I wanna do. Housing, but I'm not gonna, I don't wanna build apartments, I wanna do like something where there's like a, it's not a. House, but it's not an apartment, it's somewhere in between. Then like maybe that's something that could allow people to more cheaply build. Places for people to say that need all our intentions for housing. And so it might not be appropriate, like it wouldn't be appropriate probably, you know, Wall Street, but. It is this weird middle ground in the C one area that's largely residential now because. You know, if someone wanted to buy a house there and then knock it down and put in a um. You know, an office building, they potentially could, if in that parking.
That's a tough one too, we gotta be careful because you don't want all your commercial. Space being taken up by housing because your commercial space is what generates our sales tax, so. That could be tough on the city too, as far as.
Mm-hmm, so maybe. Because this is a lot bigger than just, let's get basics, kind of like health, safety, welfare sort of standards in place for extended stay hotels. Which was the original conversation, may- maybe it would be best to kind of separate them for now. Move forward with the extended stay hotel type things and then address. This like broader alternative housing type conversation. Subsequently.
I think we're.
Yeah.
I think our, yeah, our definition of like not use the word shared amenities because I think we've opened the door to. It could mean too many things, so it's hotel motel extended stay, but our definition of extended stay includes that. Seasonal or over thirty days.
Right, yeah, I put in a proposed definition on page two. That says extended stay hotel motel renting of a hotel or motel room for duration. Of stay greater than twenty nine days.
Right.
Um and that kind of just simply defines it, then we put um this proposed shared amenity housing definition, which would include an extended stay hotel. But kind of is much broader and you know, maybe we. Shelled this at this very moment, but.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Is something perhaps, it sounds like people are generally interested in pursuing it further if we can have kind of a more. Get more concrete. Information about it and all of that.
Let's get out of the hotel thing, be done with that and maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Just from this conversation, it's much larger than we need to address tonight, and so I don't think our time is spent wisely doing that where we could make some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Headway on the hotel motel portion, which is more relevant.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We don't have any dorms coming in yet, we don't have anybody that we know of knocking down houses.
Taking their house, yeah.
Right.
So did we come up with square footage or anything like that, or how many to a room or?
Yes, so I have some information going on from that, I have some information about that, I talked with. Fire authority and they had no standards, and then I talked with. Um which is good, um and I talked with the. Safe built, our building department folks and they. Are fine where.
The fifty square foot per person?
Yeah, they mentioned that for a bedroom, enclosed bedrooms require for the first person seventy square feet. And for and fifty square feet for each person thereafter, and that for an entire dwelling unit. It has to be two hundred square feet per person, and so. What I take from that conversation is that if you wanted to rent a dorm to or like a hotel room to two people, you'd need at least one twenty. If you wanted to rent it to three people, you'd need at least one seventy. Uh you know, four people would be two. Uh two twenty and it would go on and on, which is not huge for person, but the problem. That I ran into when looking at state statutes, and I think I might have mentioned this last month, the state passed a law saying that we cannot um. Regulate um what the definition of like a family is, and so five individual people could come in and say, hey, we're a family, if you wanna rent this.
Right.
House, you know, and so. The only way we can really, and I don't know, you you probably have a little bit more legally, but the only way we can really regulate occupancy is by tying it to some other. Code, like building code or fire code or the like, and so I don't know. How we could limit folks. To the square footages that are smaller than this, but what maybe we could do to limit total occupants in spaces, limit. Uh is like ties to bathrooms or something like that, or I don't even know if we can do that. I I think the building code piece is obviously. Starter. But um. I I think aside from that, it would really have to be a health safety concern. Um I'll say the C N L conferences in two weeks, they give a very good legislative update. I'm sure all of the attorneys there will be having a lot of questions about. This newest occupancy bill. And the C F, you know. There may be some workarounds that.
Sure.
Kind of have been brainstormed up at C F, C N L.
But will they talk about size? You think?
Oh yeah, they'll talk about. This bill and how to, I I would presume they talk about this bill and. Strategies to limit occupancy in the wake.
So right now, I would say we should leave it at the fifty.
What about uh maybe looking into like to see kind of the complete other side, um looking into right, uh well. Uh. Rules for tiny homes that exist to cut, you know, cause that would be the smallest version of things are. Only, you know, legit within, so maybe we can see how small as they have gone to and. Is that where we think it's?
The tiny home's a little difficult because you've got a kitchen, bathroom, everything, the hotel rooms are just. Hotel room.
Yeah, but you can still figure out who compares square footage.
Yeah, and I don't know, like. I think tiny homes would be something that I would want to include in a, just broadly speaking, with shared amenity type housing, because I've seen a few places around the state where. It's like maybe ten tiny homes a lot, and then they have like a kitchen block, a shower block and things like that, and people can come in for a year or six months and. Either like rent a tiny home or bring their own in, and then it's kind of the shared, shared water facilities and sewer and all that as well. Um so it is a good, I think, standard, but I wonder. How like are tiny homes, I assume are supposed to be building code, but places that have tiny homes, I don't know how they regulate, how many people can occupy their like private tiny home.
Or at least how do they define like the minimum square footage per person?
Yeah.
You know, so at least look at the formula.
I can look at that, cause that would, I mean, like seventy square feet for the first person and then fifty. For the next people is smaller than I was anticipating per person, um. I had done some research into like college dorms and found that like they average around the state of Colorado about a hundred square feet per person. Uh which is nice for you know, college students, but that's not technically required, so like the average dorm room. Across college camps is about two hundred square feet and you know, shared between two people and then they have. You know, shared kitchen and share or whatever cafeteria and share shower blocks and all that, so you know, I did put in some potential regulations like uh. Like I don't know whether we could require like, let's say one. Uh. Kitchen, for example, like one fixed cooktop, like a stove or oven or like fixed hot plate per like five occupants, I wrote in here, cause I still had somewhere else. One refrigerator per five occupants and one sink sort of thing, where if you had four that you have as private one group room. Because that would be a way potentially to say, well, you don't have enough kitchen space, you can't have this many people, um.
I think what we've seen is the communal kitchen, so when they have the communal kitchen, they don't allow. Cooktops or what are those things? That in the rooms?
Oh, the hot plates.
The hot plates because of fire hazards.
Sure.
And then they, a microwave, yes, and. A small refrigerator, yes, but other than that, I don't think they're allowing anything, I mean, if you take a crock pot, just like at the end of something, it's a little different.
Yeah, it's hard to regulate something you can just plug into a wall, like for city standpoint, I think, but we could say like, well, if you have a shared, like if you don't have. Private kitchens in each room, you have a shared kitchen instead, it needs to have at least X number stove, X number of like per number of people, like one per three or one per five or something, and I don't know that that. Would limit occupancy in a way that would go against. A state law, I don't think so, but because we could do a similar thing with like a bathroom, you could say like. Private like your own, one toilet or one shower per three people or five people or something, and say like if you have, so then if it's. Bathroom in each room, you can only have the five people in a room or what.
Do we wanna get into all that or just go with square footage for a room? Maybe then, because I mean, you can't have cooked stuff in a, you know. Hotel room, you have to have separate sinks, so that's not gonna be realistic, um. We're not looking at the places that are. Going to refurbish these rooms and make them into individual extended stays that you stay in with a stove refrigerator that you see in a hotel.
Cause if they did that, if they had a private bathroom, that they had a private kitchenette sort of thing in each room, then we could probably just call it dwelling unit, if that building code for that. And then it wouldn't even have to be. Potentially could be regulated.
Well, maybe that's at the point where we change then the definition of extended stay, that it includes that. Which we could do that right now, where if somebody wanted to change one of the rooms, maybe they wanna take two of the rooms and make it into that. Because they're gonna have to meet all the fire codes and everything like that to do that, so that could be part of the extended stay, but the minimum would still be. You know, whether it's the fifty feet per person or that seventy and then fifty after.
Yeah.
Cause what we're looking at is you've got rooms that they're putting five people in. Which is fine, but.
Well, that's kind of what I was gonna say.
I've been in those rooms and I wanna stay in one with five people, but it's do it.
Wouldn't it depend on what they either build or. A remodel, cause some, cause I was thinking, um I was like, they might have a a studio with, they already has a. Kitchenette or whatever, and they could apply for a permit for that one studio to be extended. Right, so but they could also be like, oh, I'm gonna build rooms for like six people, something, whatever they do. One room for six people, or they can just choose to have separate rooms per person, so. It would be, it would be hard, there's like a lot of options, it could be by bed or by room, so I don't know, it may be. The the solution would be to like. Have this, you know, options for this, if it's like this, if it's like that, I don't know.
Or the definition, like I was saying, for extended stay does include all that, if they wanna be in a, they're an extended stay ho- hotel motel. And under the extended stay definition, it's square footage per person and may or may not include kitchenette. Um stove top, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, exactly, cause they might just see rooms with this in the communal kitchen, yeah.
That way, the property owner then, if they wanna take that room, two rooms. And if they wanna just make it all for beds, or if they wanna make it with a kitchen, they can, and they're under that definition and it's allowable.
I I think that's here in these minimum standards, yeah, like it's either or, either you shall.
That's the way this.
Yeah.
Have like an individual bathroom and individual kitchen containing minimum facilities in each room, or you shall have.
Yeah.
Like a shared one for all of your extended stay guests that contains these minimum things.
The only thing I came across. With the units that I'm aware of and how they've been doing them, and that's like four of them, um. The stove top. Oven. That was a difficult one because one of the properties. Um was not able to do it because of fire codes.
Like in individual rooms or just?
No, in their communal kitchen. So they couldn't put a stove in there, they used the hot plates and they got pizza ovens, but they couldn't do a freestanding stove. Because I think because of the space or something, I'm not really sure, I don't know if they would have had to install a sprinkler system or. It didn't meet the fire code or something, um so I don't know if. If that's something we wanna look, if if you have, look on page six, we have fixed cooking appliance, stove top, blah, blah, blah. Kitchen in the kitchen facilities.
Right, so that is for the shared amenity housing?
Well, yeah, let's, but that's.
I would look at the page four.
It does say built in cooktop or stove.
Bottom of page four, it talks about built in.
Cooking facilities. Built in cooktop, yeah, so it's kind of the same, but.
Could be a microwave instead of a cooktop.
Well, I just, I just know the one place and they've done a very nice job with the place, but they just were not able to. Put a stove in, which now it would. Could they spend the money on it and maybe do it? Yeah, I don't know, I'm just saying, do we really?
Sure.
Need to define that.
So what might be better to acquire as far as like, like do we want to make sure that folks using a communal kitchen has something to cook things?
Yeah, I think it can say the stove, cooktops, um cooks, top or stove. Built in cooktop, I think, or who says it has to be built in, I mean, freestanding.
I think uh standard, right?
Is what?
I think building standards will be the one that we will have to follow, I don't think we have, we have a say on what kind of stove.
That's what I mean, it says built in here, I don't think we should say built in, and it could be a stove unit or. Cookplates.
Like a microwave and oven that sits on our counter that we plug in that we eat more than anything else, and so, yeah, I mean, I just.
Well, cooking appliance.
Yeah, cooking appliance or.
How do you define them? Yeah, like, you know, I guess like, if you want to keep it quite broad, then would it be acceptable if they just put, say like, four microwaves?
No, I think we wanna make them. Do more than that because it's.
Yeah, cause they have microphones in rooms.
Yeah, they have my, and it's a quality of life living, I know Kent was very adamant about every room had to have a cook. A a stove in it, and that's a, and that's unrealistic, cause.
Or a natural floor. Yeah, a natural for that, I think is what I was very adamant about.
Well, then I think it's on that the hotel to pay for the, I know it's expensive, but they wanna be an extended stay, where people are paying for. You know, twenty, thirty plus days to stay.
They do have to have stove and oven, I mean, I'm just asking. They do have to have stove and oven, I mean, I'm just asking.
They have to put in something that gets around the fire code.
Well, and I do wonder, because I do see places that have essentially like a. Cook like one of those hot plates, but it's like built in to the countertop. And so they don't need like a two hundred and twenty volt or like. Um or a gas line for it, I don't think, but it still is like fixed, and so you can't just walk off with it. And so I'm wondering maybe that would be a.
A fixed.
Built in but and fixed, but it wouldn't be, maybe it has different fire code, I'm not sure.
Oh, that's why it says built in.
That was my thought is that it has like permanent facilities that aren't just, you just plug in a bunch of stuff that might not need it. Because if you have to build it in, then it probably has to be inspected by a building inspector and it has to be electrical and. That sort of thing was my thoughts, but it does make sense not to require like. A range and oven because then you might, for commercial kitchen, you might need like a hood and run new gas lines and. That might be unreasonable.
Okay, so.
I think we wanna do for them to have a cooking option.
Yeah.
In the communal kitchen.
We want a cooking option, but we also wanna make sure it's safe.
So whatever fire code says, like built in whatever.
And then I guess my only other clarifier on that is like, do you wanna have a minimum per person or something like? So if they just like, let's say, one of them had ten units, would one fixed cooktop be? Suitable or would you wanna have?
Well, wouldn't be able to do it per unit because they might put four in one unit, three in another, two in another. From what I've seen. One place has one, but they all make it work.
I, I.
Thanksgiving was kind of fun, actually.
I think it might be very difficult to try to enforce.
The numbers, I agree.
There's ten rooms, two might be occupied.
I also think, and this is just assuming, but if you're coming to, to stay, if you are the occupant, then you have to. Be okay with possibly sharing one with others or you don't stay. You could, it is a choice, um and so we need to make sure reasonable what we're requiring from the hotels. Knowing that.
We give our employees the option of this place or this place, and this is the amenities of this one. And this is in its first come, first served, so yeah, okay, so not per person.
And then the other ones we have is like refrigerator, sink. And like some sort of seating space within the kitchen, so you don't have to like take it back to your room. Get reasonable folks.
I, I, I think the question now is. If you're fine with what you see on pages four. Five. The next step would be bringing this ordinance form back. When we reconvene in August. I think in July, special meeting, and it also sounds to me like. We're tabling shared amenity housing until we. See how the hotel licensing works out.
Um, I'm sorry, guys, um, I have a lot of notes. Do you mind if I go through, I just wanna make sure I didn't miss anything, we've done all over the place, so. And I'm gonna focus on the hotel thing. Um about the definite, existing definitions on unstopped hotels, since we're gonna might be adding and stuff. I thought it was kind of funny that it says unstopped hotel definition, and it says in my or my notes, we staffed on site. Which I thought was funny, bro, like.
Yeah, sure. Put in the code for some, like that's what was passed, we council passed that, but I'm not sure why. I mean, I, it does seem like. Doesn't have to be staffed, but I guess in a staffed hotel, if you have staff on site, then wouldn't it be a staffed hotel, right? So I'm not sure how it got.
So I think the hotel motel's extended stay should be staffed on site.
Yeah, no, it will be, that's. That's captured by hotel motel, I think the reason for that, UG is.
Because it's on site.
You didn't want it to be a zoning violation if there were an unstopped hotel and they had a staff person. Like gave you the option to have staff, so you weren't forced to not have staff.
I think that's the answer.
Okay, oh, I guess it makes sense to the lawyer. Um, on extended stay hotel motel, I thought since we were talking about them getting licensed, I thought it might be good to specify. That the renting of a hotel license for that. Um, consideration of stay, blah, 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 you know, I don't know if it's. What?
Within the definition.
Exactly. I don't know if it's, I'm just overthinking.
So you're saying like. Hotel is a licensed hotel that rents hotels and hotels.
A licensed hotel for extended. Just so, I don't know, so it doesn't just say that it's any one, right, cuz we're saying.
Well, the definition, the definition should be hotel. Comma motel, comma extended stay hotel motel, it's all three under one definition.
No, cuz extended is longer in the regular.
Oh, I see, so you have to separate them out, so you could do.
Just, I'll, all I'm saying just to specify that is.
I, I think another way to do that is in the license. When you create the system, just say. No extended stay hotel and motel shall operate without first obtaining a hotel. Or an extended stay license.
Um, which gets me to another point that I might as well just throw now, um, I was thinking. What if we look into? The hotels, uh hotels getting licensed. Per room or their rooms are the ones getting licensed instead of the hotel? Cuz I feel like it will make it more clear, like you get, and somewhere here it says that the, our room should display that this room is. For extended play, uh stay, so I was thinking that. That kind of will make sense, it's like, oh yeah, you have, I don't know how the system ends up being, but like, okay, yeah, your hotel has. Two extended rooms, okay, here's a sticker for one and sticker for the other door kind of thing that you put on, kinda, you know?
Yeah, is that what you're thinking is the verbal to like be able to license just the rooms that?
I was thinking what would be the most practical, yes.
I thought they had to, I thought we wanted to keep in. The licensing scenes were registration requirements, so they'll have to submit a plan.
Yes, but um I was saying that we could look at also instead of the hotel applying, the whole hotel applying for a extended license. Maybe they apply for room, and not only are you trying to say, oh, they, we, we can charge it more per room, not at all, I'm just saying. I don't know, like that way.
This is now, though, I, I don't, we can clearly add that, right now the. Rooms are applied for. And designated on the site. Or on the building.
Yeah, 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 uh huh.
Yeah, and then the rooms are then subsequently marked with some sort of. Display of the license. Yeah, I think I, I would be happy to do it either way, I think, like if someone, because I guess like. Some hotels might have some rooms that wouldn't be eligible. So I think if you wanted to get a license for your whole hotel, you could.
They do both.
And then otherwise, we could say, okay, well, if you only wanna rent out room one through four and room five through eight are still short term. We would just specify in your license that one before or less long term.
Yeah.
Extended stays.
Right.
But five through eight, you cannot stay for more than twenty nine days.
I think that, yeah, I think that would just be specific to the license, you're gonna apply for your extended stay, whether you have one or four rooms that are used as extended stay. But in your license, it's gonna say you have one forward.
And would you, for this August meeting, would it make sense for us to put together like a draft? License application sort of forms to see, or do you think we're not quite there yet?
You sure?
I could do it.
I think what you might. You know, cover your concern is on the license. Or part of the license application, uh I, I would say the license designates the rooms. That are permitted for extended stay.
And yeah, and that makes total sense, I mean, obviously that's how all the licenses go, you know, I can just open the hotel and. So yeah, I'm licensed and I have to show it, but I was just thinking that way, I don't know how will they advertise it, you know, that way it's not. They can just tell you, oh yeah, this is long term and. I don't know, anyway, I don't think it explained anymore. Um, next. Um, on shared amenity housing, I know we're not talking about that, but under the definition, I just thought we could remove insecure bedroom space. Like the second line, almost halfway through, it says private and secure bedroom space. As if we are not, housing facilities that do not meet the definition of a dwelling unit that provide occupants with a minimum privacy secure bedroom. It sounds like we're saying that we're not providing security, you know? Yeah, um, okay, so we talked about other stuff. About a parking spot, um I, I, I was kinda thinking that we might need to get a little bit, uh. Smart or like creative with a formula, cuz it depends of if we go by square footage per person. Or if we go by room, by bed, or however we did, we decide to do that.
Yeah, that is a good question to bring up, because right now for a hotel or motel. Our parking requires one space per room plus, so if you have ten spaces, ten, ten rooms, ten spaces, plus two spaces for staff. So a ten-room hotel would need twelve spaces. But if the, if some of those rooms are converted to use as extended stays, should they have different parking requirements?
I have to say the way it's written already works. Because what they do is. They have to get a permit for their parking, and then the. Place only allows that many parking spots, and they're pretty.
Oh, so.
Strict about it, so right now what they do is, like, say, one of the places. They tell us upfront that, um, there's ten parking spots, first come, first served, and when the employees are. Getting their room. Ahead of time, but getting their deposit down and stuff, they either reserve a parking spot or they don't get to park there. So, um, we find that people right away try to, it's amazing how many people travel without a car.
Right, do you think that works for someone who's not here for? Like say is here permanently and isn't thinking they're only here for, say, six months. Like it's, you know, cuz I know there's some people who maybe have occupied a room at a hotel for two years. So maybe do have more need for a car.
You know, that's to me is up to the property owner if they wanna take away, I mean, sure, we could increase some spots, but.
I mean, it said needed, I, I'm, I'm thinking like.
I don't think they have the space for.
Why did we started talking about this? Because we wanted people to. Have a better space, right? And these people were living there month to month, forever, like years, probably. And then these people mostly, I don't think, they don't have cars. I think this is for the people that, you know, really, really struggling, getting on a boat to pay for a whole month, that they have to be. So that's kind of what I'm thinking about the parking, but I don't know, I guess we have to make a decision on this.
Sure, so some, at least two of you are okay with leaving the parking as existing for hotels and motels as one per room plus two.
One per room.
Yeah, I think one per, per room is very reasonable.
By the way, it's really difficult to start by parking, right?
Yes, and I guess we can adjust it.
Sure, yeah, the only reason I was, I brought up the question originally was to say, let's say there are. Unrelated people sharing a room, does that mean then that? You should have two spaces or something, but that makes it hard to. You know, then for anything that's, for future developments, say that wanted to do it, maybe that's when you'd want to revisit parking. Or like someone wanted to build a dorm, maybe we'd say, one is not enough.
I would think right now that nobody, I mean, you take like. Uplift, you look at the little parking spot, that's all they have. It's, it's the one right there. Um, there's no way they could. Do anything because there is no more parking.
Sure, well, and that would be in line with what a lot of places are doing of kind of keeping parking back, uh, Netherlands low. Which is probably a good thing. Okay, sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, good, sorry, I'm sorry, I have more things, um, another, I thought that crossed my mind is. I, I thought that maybe they will have this extended stay rooms. Or food and whatever, and they should, would be able to also rent them shorter, right, like. Um, on minimums, minimum standards, uh, number four for hotels and hotels, it says. The following common area amenities must be available to the residents. Um. Number two says probation of storage of any personal possessions within shared common areas of the building. Um, I might be understanding this wrong, but, um, I just started to just be specific about. Common areas, cuz I feel like, I'm thinking me as a J one, when I, you know, when people will stay in those hotel rooms, like sometimes we'll have to check out and still have a lot. Too gigantic bags in like, you know, you know, like every hotel gives that option to you to hold your bags, so. I wanted to understand better what.
I think the intent of this would be like, let's say the hotel room has like a balcony would be, or maybe not a balcony, but let's say you just like are storing your. Bikes and snowboards and. Something like that, or, and when another says, says other areas inside, I guess, like you see sometimes, like people will just like. You have a grill that's in the yard and that like, you know, like your winter tires for your car. They're not on the car or things like that, I think is what's trying to avoid more so than kind of like temporary storage, but.
We, we, I think we could, uh, specify that unless it's a. Designated area.
We could say storage of personal possessions should be in an enclosed area.
On a non-designated area, oh.
You know, like you could store it, it's like.
Because I think they do give them rooms to, to be honest.
Yeah, they're like a closet or something, you know. Obviously, that's not a shared, I don't know if that's a closet would be a shared.
I think from a health and safety standpoint, probably the things that folks are trying to, like, maybe what we're trying to avoid is like either. The site becomes an eyesore because people are storing every junk all over the place, or. That things are stored all over the place, stripping hazards, fire hazard within the building, so I think if the building. Wanted to provide a storage room or area that should be allowed in them, like within standards, I would guess, right?
I think a storage room that the hotel operates would not be a shared common area. So I don't think that would qualify. Uh, I don't think storage of like bags when you're checking out for a few hours would qualify. Uh, because. You know, frankly, just being the person that would have to file a complaint with the court to force this. You know, I, I don't think holding bags for a couple hours would constitute storage.
So what's the difference, I mean, we've got number two, and then you've got number five, we're, we're talking about the secured storage, so. I think what, isn't it, what they're saying is so you don't have a bike in the kitchen area and somebody trips over it and it's a fire, they can't.
The unit, the, uh, don't let junk accumulate in common areas if you wanna let people store stuff.
Put it in the.
Put it in the area that's. That's my point, I guess, yeah, that's, like, I. I think for secure storage, that could go as far as. A room with. Forty different shelves, and each room has a little shelf space to keep some extra crap they can't put in the room. I think that would be a secure storage. Common area storage, you wouldn't want someone. Like, uh, like a bike, right, you wouldn't want the bike or, uh. Dylan's example was good, keeping their snow tires like out in the parking lots somewhere next to the fence.
Um, another thought I had, uh, says, uh, number five, number, uh. Um another thought I had uh says uh number five, number uh. Number four, it says communal sitting space. Uh just thought about how sometimes I go to our V U Bs and they say there's like you can have twelve people there and it's only sitting for six. So I just thought about that. I mean, I don't know how important this is, but I thought of bringing it up. Um. What did you mean on six, number two, our relocation service as part of business relocation?
I've been part of that. My company relocated me, right? They put me up in an extended stay.
Okay.
So or excuse me, I think it was still a hotel. I'm gonna stay the week, but I guess. I'm assuming that's what that definition is trying to achieve there, someone's being relocated for business purposes.
Correct.
Part of the job is. And we had talked about that a little bit last time. There was like three sections there and the third one, we all kind of said. That seems strange, let's remove it, but. Seemed okay with the other two as potential reasons why you you do that um.
Which one are we looking at? I lost.
Page five. It's like a Roman at six.
Or in the P.
Section one.
On the page or, okay, that's why I'm really looking at page six, okay.
I mean, that examines, I know it says business, but it would exempt like construction, for example, taking advantage of that. Like they could do that cuz it's not business relocation, right? Right?
Thank you for that explanation.
I think that's um, the first one, of course, is like, say, my house burns down, I'm allowed to. Stay in a hotel for longer, even if it's not licensed, yeah.
Got it. Awesome, thank you. Um and maybe the last one is. You have a renewal inspection requirements. Do hotels get a your annual in uh inspection?
No, not right now, right? I don't, not that I know, there's no requirement. At least within city codes, I don't know if fire has to inspect or something annually. That is certainly possible.
How often, do they need? Requirements for how often they need to be inspected or not at all?
Based off one of our other clients, it's usually uh how they do it is uh. Once yearly, the fire building, all the different departments go in and inspect premises together. To make it easier for the hotels. I think this is just adding to. Codify that inspection and permit. Dylan or a PD officer to be part of the inspection rather than. I I I I think fire probably doesn't handle inspection almost certainly. But I think this just expands who can be part of that inspection.
I thought it was like it made sense if they already do it annually, yeah, why not just put that or add it to it?
No, I I think this is added to it, yeah.
Um and then you're think asking if you, we think that January twenty fifth is like a. Good enough time for, you know?
Yeah.
A grace period um.
I think that would be uh not to jump ahead of you, but I think that would be changed depending on.
When it gets.
How far along we move on this cuz now if it's August that we're looking at it. If we recommend, you know, if there's no, i- if we can make a decision in August. You're looking at council passing this in September, that January date would probably change.
My comment on that. Was gonna be to like ideally. If they could figure out a way to make sure there's not a gap for these families. I don't know if it's possible or not, but you know, cuz that's another reason why we're doing this, so they they have a safety policy.
Yeah, I hear you.
Um I think that's all, you're welcome.
Okay, what else do you need, Dylan, from us?
That's pretty good direction for us to be able to move forward in the next. I think we're getting a roll for two, two months. Yeah. And then. Um but if anyone has anything else tonight or just in the next month or so, please reach out and I will. Make sure that's part of the discussion next time. I I I feel pretty comfortable being able to draft.
Yeah, I think for, this is good. I mean, we've come a long way. At least, I mean, we keep rehashing some of the same things, but at least we're sure about it and know.
Yeah, it gets evolving. Thank you so much for very thorough like analysis, if you leave helpful. Compared to all the time we're like, like, what are we talking about, hotel or what? So this is very helpful.
Yeah, you should be able to read half of it at least. I know what, okay, what I'm trying to talk about. Okay, well, great.
Okay, cool. And then probably not till August.
Yes. Yeah, I would say unless there's like an extreme emergency of something needing to get reviewed. I don't know what sort of planning emergency exists necessarily, but um. And yeah, August seventh seems okay.
I think everything gets so busy in the summer that it'll be August and we won't even realize we missed a meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's already June. It was just February.
Are we turned off?
Um yeah, let me just, um I'll just stop the recording.